Okay, I'd like to make a motion to open this meeting.
Okay.
Okay, we're welcome, members Searle.
Yes.
Member Olson?
Yes.
Member Dubrowski?
Aye.
Chair Pollak?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Thank you very much. Does anyone need to recuse themselves on any issue before us?
The village application. Village's application from Bureau of Architecture.
Okay. All right, that's it. We'd like to go through and do the minutes first for Monday, October 7. I think everybody's had a chance to go through these and minor changes have been made.
I made the change to the sign on this board. She placed sign.
Oh, yes.
They're not in the minutes that you have.
What was the change?
The change that Jeff had suggested regarding the wording.
Which, it was a wording with what was in there. You'll make that change when? That's not in here. This is just printed out.
Correct.
Okay. Any other questions about the minutes?
I have no.
No questions.
Make a motion to approve the minutes.
I'll second.
Okay, member Searle?
Aye.
Member Olson?
Yes.
Member Dubrowski?
Aye.
Chair Pollak?
Aye.
Motion passes.
Thank you. Okay, and I'd like to go on to the 21 North Main Street, which is this building. And we have an expert in front of us here to explain the change.
No, no expert. As you all know, Dorthea Chikarelli, village clerk representing the village. The board previously approved the project we have for the back entrance of the village. Our architect was here on another matter reviewing our roofing that we're taking care of. And as she was looking down, she decided that grade, it was better to shift the sidewalk up. It'd be an easier grade, apparently. So that's what we're asking, and we submitted that change to you.
So this, what we're talking about here is an amendment to the approval of July 18th. The project was approved then, and this is a, an addition to?
Yeah, it's just a minor change in the location of that sidewalk.
An amendment of the existing structure.
And it's just, it's purely just reorganization?
Yes, it's just, it falls better.
It's the last page in there.
If you look at, if you look at the two, I know I'm not participating in the conversation, I'm just trying to provide, I'll look for you guys.
And we'll be taking out the tree if you're confused. The tree will go, it's an invasive, and it needs to go anyway, and they'll replating something else.
So this is the drawing, this is the?
If you need to compare.
Those are the same two.
This is amended, right?
Yep.
This is the one. So this is the original, this is the amended.
Let's see, these are identical. What's the difference this way and this way?
Nothing. It's not that. It's the sidewalk going to it from the village hall.
Okay, so now it's gonna look like this.
Yeah. Yeah.
So it's not?
It's not the rounded corner?
This is what I'm pointing out on Virginia's document. These documents have an amended date, I'm inaccurately stating, and I'll ask you to help me if I'm wrong. But if you look at this, there's an amended date of 10/10/22 based off the original drawing, and I don't see any differences. That's all my question was on this.
The curvature of the sidewalk.
Yeah, it's the change in the sidewalk. It was over here, it was moving up.
It's inaccurately stamped for the amended date.
Should've been over here, should've been down here. There's your curve on that.
The both, 10/10.
Well, the, what was the date that the application was originally approved?
It was July.
It was in July.
Oh, yeah, yeah, so it is.
So the 10/10 date is?
I think it was further down, and we moved the sidewalk up.
Okay. It looks like it was flush against the asphalt now.
Yes, now we're bringing it more towards the?
Size here or so?
Yeah. Just better for the location of the sidewalk. Should be still hoping to have it evened and.
And it has nothing to do with the angle that the sidewalk goes and meets the building? This is not what we're looking at?
Yeah. No, it's just totally.
It's just this part right here?
Yeah, it's just changing, because this has to come up. It's the length, it was going down further and meeting this sidewalk over here.
Okay.
It's just coming up.
You'll notice on the other one, there's about a section of anything between the steps and where the curvature is, where it now meets.
What drawing is?
I think it's the last page.
Because I just want to be clear on what we're looking at, because there's a lot of, there's, the misrepresentation didn't help, and then there's not a lot of clear pictures.
I think this was the original.
Well, that's the, this is the original one.
Yeah, that's the original. This is the change, it's coming up.
It's squaring off.
It's squaring it off.
So it's these two dollars facing the same direction? It's the A10.
Why are you thinking this is an incorrect date? Because it's not today.
That's when they submitted it to me.
I put the amended issue date in red at the top, so you guys would know what they updated.
That's the old diagram.
The amended, that's the old drawing.
This one is May 30, first?
It's a different view is all. It's looking at something different.
No, I'm not saying it's better at all, I'm just, I can't read.
This is a, I don't know what that one is. Let me, let me read, I can't, I'm sorry, I can't read the fine print.
It was really fine print.
Virginia, that's the old, there's not even the building square on it, and this is totally all.
The issue is, this is a plan view, and does not show, it's not going to show the sidewalk and stuff.
That's because this is a plan view of the first floor. This is a plan view of the basement floor. So site, site elements would not and should not appear on a floor plan drawing.
Okay.
Just so, just so you understand what you're looking at.
Yeah.
Okay?
So the only thing that we're taking into consideration in the change is this sidewalk right here and that sidewalk right here?
Yes, it's coming up. It's, it's actually gonna go through where the tree is up here, and that's an invasive tree, and we already, we need to get rid of it anyway. So it's just a better angle, it's better.
Yeah. So this, just the green arrow?
Yes.
That's significant.
Yes, because it's coming off here before it was coming down here, and as you said, it was closer to the, it's just a better angle.
And it's square.
Yes.
Yeah, yeah, and it's square, yeah.
Same sidewalk, but on the.
Just, yeah, just shifted.
I'm curious why the basic species of tree is.
I don't get what it is.
We're just, we're just talking about it. It's a, some kind of pear tree?
Glitter pear?
Could be, yeah.
Yeah.
It looks very nice, but it's, I don't.
These are the ones.
Yeah.
Ask about the tree, because I have nothing else of anybody else.
That's it, once you approve it, it's going out to me.
I was just unclear on what we were actually looking at.
Yeah, it's just the sidewalk.
Okay.
That was the only thing that was changing that part. The rest has been designed years ago.
So does this have a unique number on it, so we can, we'll vote on this, we're referring to specific?
I think it's just the amendment answer to.
The amended drawing, A10?
Here's a sheet number. A10? Oh, they're all A10.
Yeah, that's the amended.
Oh, okay, that's only amended.
What's the amended issue date?
Yeah.
10/10/22.
All right. Any other discussion on that?
A motion. A motion to accept the amended application?
To amend the C of A by the request, amended application.
A motion to amend the C of A based off the updated application.
Okay.
I'll second that.
Okay, good. We mention this amended issue date or no? No, okay.
Member Searle?
I can't vote.
Member Olson?
Yes.
Member Dubrowski?
Aye.
Chair Pollak?
Yes.
Okay, motion passes.
The village thanks you.
Thank you. We thank the village.
Appreciate you.
When is this gonna start to take place?
The hope is we'll be going out to bid, we're gonna keep it open at least a month, with the project hopefully starting in the spring. We're hoping with that kind of date, we'll get some decent bidding, because it is a grant project, and we are kind of timed for that grant money, and we're hoping it's enough.
Is there a landscape architect that will replace that tree?
We'll pick another tree, and put a tree in a proper location. Yeah, no, the mayor's already decided.
Does Virginia have any of the copper maple stuff? Some rubber directed ones?
Oh, that's through the town. They have all those.
That would be enormous.
It's Copper Beach.
Copper Beach, that's what it is.
Yeah.
Well, I mean, eventually.
Anyway, so hopefully in the spring, we'll be moving on and having a nice safe entrance.
Water situation still okay in there? It's not an issue with the?
Yeah, no, we looked and all that.
Good. Thank you, Dorthea.
Thank you.
Okay, good. Perfect timing. The next issues are deck, Vanbroek Drive. Gentlemen?
May I first apologize to the applicant for not coming last Tuesday night? I'm sorry, I got my COVID and flu vaccines together early last Tuesday, and by 5:30, I was in bed feeling miserable, and was in bed all day. I had not been notified in advance, or I might've made a different appointment time.
And the second, second issue here too, I'm going to apologize for American Airlines for delaying. I had all intentions of being here, but they had other ideas, so.
It was done, so you can still be there, so.
Anyway, great. Thank you for coming back in or apologizing. Get to this, and you have added a new drawing.
Correct, at the request of you guys.
Last, last one on scale.
Yes.
Thank you.
Although I guess it wasn't reflected in the minute, because we didn't officially open a meeting last week, I just wanted to reiterate your, if you could re pose the question you had asked in terms of the drawings.
Oh, so I think the railings are really, hopefully, the only thing to talk about. We included pictures of the wood aluminum railings that, in all reality, I think have a much cleaner look than having the big ugly wood spindles that just get screwed to the outside. You know, the question is, is aluminum allowed? They're not made in wrought iron anymore, or any really kind of iron. You know, aluminum railings came into use in the early 1940s at some point. I know this person's house was built in 1940. There's plenty of black metal railings in the town, or in the village too, which all look very nice compared to just the thicker wood. And it also cuts down on the profile of looking both ways. You know, you don't have the square two inch by two inch, or really they're a little bit less, because one would get smaller, it's one of the longest type it goes. You know, these are just the little round ballisters. Those railings are custom built on site so that the spacing is exact for each one. And in the original one, I included some pictures versus some of the wood ones that we had done. You know, and then I included some pictures that we'd just taken around the village of black metal railings.
Got that.
So the question really comes down to, is aluminum allowed as the replacement for stuff that just isn't available? So after last week, I did a little bit of research, and personally, I feel it's an issue of, yes, historically, aluminum, I think, would be appropriate, however, I think the examples you showed are not, like, you know, they need historical materials, but that is not the historical style, the mixed use of materials with the wood and the aluminum. So I would be comfortable with an aluminum railing or a wood railing, but I have a hard time from the historical perspective. Going with the metal, then yeah, then we'll go with the all wood railing. We'll just go with the all wood railing there, the customers find with that.
I agree. I'm gonna stop right here. This is obviously a drawing to scale, it's on graph paper. However, what is required on the application form is drawing to scales of affected elevations. Do you know what an elevation drawing is?
Yes.
Okay, that would be the side of a house showing the deck against the house.
The house is?
This is, I'm sorry, I'm still speaking. This is not an elevation drawing, and it does not show the house. It does not show how this deck will interact with the house. And it's clearly stated, and I'm very sorry that the code enforcement official accepted the application inappropriately, but he did, because a required element of your application has still not been provided. I do not approve this, in my opinion, this application is still not complete.
I think, you know, we provided a drawing with, that's up against the house, it has the measurements on it, I think you guys can clearly see.
This is not an elevation drawing. An elevation drawing is a view of the house from the roof to the grade, from one side to the other. It shows the windows, it shows the doors, it shows the siding.
The door's not even in yet.
All right, that's what an elevation drawing shows. In this case, perhaps a partial elevation would suffice, but zero elevation does not meet the requirements clearly stated on our application form. And one more time, the building inspector has accepted an application which is not complete.
Let me ask you a question, because of all that, this view of this, this deck is equal to the first floor of this house, right?
Correct, you walked directly out of the door and onto the deck.
And these railings have an elevation of what, 36 inches or something like?
To meet code, yes.
Okay. My question on this, in addition to that, is I went by the structure, and boy, is it close to that creek.
Correct. And we've got in contact, in the building inspector, that's why that deck was originally gonna come out a little bit further, but we brought it back, and this is why, so they have young kids, and their original thing was to pour concrete back there and leave the pavers, but there's a huge safety issue with that. So they want to be able to come out of that door, onto a deck with a railing on it, and so the kids don't fall into the creek.
So the proposed footers would be?
They're back, the footers are back. There's some, there's a good amount of room between the footers and where that hill is. And that's the only reason that tops out there, like that 12 inches or whatever it is, it goes from eight six to 10 feet, is because the land, there's a lot more land down there, so it gives us a little more room to move those footers out.
As opposed to this end?
Correct, there's less land there, so that is why that's back a little bit. But they're looking for room to put like a table on and stuff, you know? And they know that eight foot six really isn't the answer to that, so we were able to bump that up a little bit safely there. But there, there is no more room to play other than that. I mean, this gives us a couple feet between that hill and so on.
So I have another follow-up on that. Basically, when I drove down the street and I looked at the site, you don't see, from the front door of the house, you don't see anything.
Correct.
If you drive around, there's a street that, you know, curves, ties back a little bit.
That's the only.
The foliage is gone now, but you can see the deck, but it, but it's gonna be the great height of that first floor.
Correct, it's only 18 inches off between the ground and the door where you walk out, that's the first floor, okay? That's like 17 or 18, I think it's 17.5, yeah, inches. And, yeah, and you know, right now, there's just one or two stops, or there's three stops really coming out of there now, or would be down to the ground. So this is first floor height, not elevated in any way, shape, or form, and we actually have to take about two inches of dirt out of there to get this to work by the time you meet code requirements of doing beams, and, you know, beams and joists that sit on top of it, so that, to do it right, we're actually taking maybe an inch, maybe an inch and a half of dirt out. So, and in all reality, I think that you'll never be able to see it from anywhere, obviously, but I think for drainage purposes, there's rocks going under that deck also. So actually, you probably won't even have 17 inches from the bottom of that to the ground, there'll probably be less when it's all said and done.
I think the issue here with her, and mine as well, is this side elevated view too, which you could, you know, you could do this in this style, I guess. But I had a hard time, I think I've got it figured out, that this is clearly 100% behind the house, so.
100% behind the house.
100% behind the house, and it's less than two feet off the ground, it's a first floor.
Yeah.
Instead of putting in pavers, which would roll off the back of that hill, this is strictly almost like an elevated paver, but a deck.
So the problem with pavers are, there would have to be a wall there, because it's all about safety.
Reducing safety for the kids.
And we think the weight of that retaining wall, that close to the edge, and, you know, anything, things are gonna erode here and there. I mean, we're in a house today with erosion issues. So this is really a safety, the deck is really the second choice after pavers or stamped concrete or retaining, which the code enforcement officer was not real thrilled with doing anyways, so.
The retaining wall?
Yeah, being that close. So I do agree with him.
Very close.
Yeah, it's very close, I agree. You know, quarters are required to be at 42 inches, these are gonna be a lot deeper, as deep as we can get them. We're actually gonna bury these posts instead of sitting on top of it, so that there's just thousands of pounds of concrete holding that end in there. The deck will never move. It's also why we're running the beams, instead of running long beams, this way, having a whole beam all the way on the outside, we're actually running the beams from the house out. So.
Is it fixed to the house in any way? Is it fixed to the house in any way?
Not fixed, totally freestanding. I don't like affixed decks in any way, shape, or form. I don't remember the last time I built one. So ledger boards are just.
Not gonna affect the resource. Yeah. Well, I have no questions. I know Virginia's made her point about the drawing. The fact that this is now the third time that this gentleman sat in front of us, the first time was an issue with the, with the drawings, and we made it clear after that meeting to talk about if we had more issues with the packet moving forward that we should have, we should let them know before they come back for a third time now, that there is still a missing issue. I think this should be accepted as presented, that's an opinion, so you don't have to listen to that, but like I've said, it's the third time, and this is, if it's an issue with how Steve is approving these drawings, then we have to bring that up with him. But if we look at the Village of Pittsburgh Historic Preservation Board, HPP etiquette, number nine, please remember applicants are interested in maintaining or improving their home or business in the village. The process of approval should be relatively easy, every consideration, courtesy, and kindness should be extended to them. After last week, Wednesday, that this gentleman came out from Poli, and our board had an issue with making a quorum, which we all know that happens from time to time, after we've sent him back now from two weeks ago at the original board meeting, with fall impending and the temperature dropping and the concrete needing to be able to settle, we have a young family that just moved into the village. This drawing, I have no issues with it, I would've liked to see a house side elevator like Virginia had mentioned, but I'd like to make a motion to approve this application. I'll second it before we move forward to vote. I just wanted to also let you know that you're not, you're not in front of the full board, and that the applicant does have the right for the vote to be in front of the full board, so if for whatever reason you do not want us to vote, I believe we can move that to the next meeting.
May I make another comment here? If the board is of the opinion that this is on the back of the house and not visible, I think you're on better legal standing. I agree, you've made an effort, you were told the first time you appeared that you needed an elevation drawing, because I, I told you that, and I made that clear.
So the scale drawing resulted this to Steve, he says we meet?
Well, it's a different view, it's a different view, an elevated.
I don't want to get into that. What we have in front of us now is not an application that meets the requirements clearly stated on the application form and clearly described to the applicant at his last appearance. I am very uncomfortable about the board accepting this as a complete application, accepting this level of drawing. What other, what other work would you want to see a drawing of this for? Because if you accept this this time, you must accept this the next time. So if you want to approve it, I would suggest that you, well, excuse me.
So a recent case that's come up for you has had a scale drawing?
Yes.
Oh, yeah.
Yes. I, I would urge you to reconsider and perhaps make the decision that this work is not visible from the public way.
Well, this board doesn't have that jurisdiction. As for the code enforcement office, a part of the findings could be that it is minimally visible.
I still think that, if you take an actual action.
I just said we have jurisdiction.
I understand that, but it's my opinion that if you accept this application in any way, shape, or form, you are setting an unacceptable precedent for future applications.
How about this, would you be able to do an elevation drawing and have it on file?
Why doesn't he come back and ask Steve to reconsider whether or not it's visible? Because the board feels that it's not. I think that's a legitimate question to take back to Steve, and it could be answered tomorrow.
Does the code explicitly ask for an elevation drawing, or is that simply the application?
That's the answer.
And is there, is there a discrepancy in terms of code and code enforcement, in terms of what we put on an application and what is in?
What's required in the application was taken specifically from the code. Jeff and I worked on this. Putting together those boxes, those lists of things comes immediately out of the code.
Would that be Village of Pittsburgh code?
Yes, not New York State.
Right, because the state of New York doesn't require like architectural scale drawings until you have a certain amount of money.
This is a design review board, and I understand that law, very familiar with that, with that law. This is something different. This is a design. This is not building code, this is not New York State education law, which is where that dollar value comes from.
To answer your question, code requires dimensioned elevation drawings of proposed changes. So the question is, is there an elevation drawing of the change? Or is it an elevation drawing of the whole elevation? And maybe there's not a distinction.
I think you're making an artificial distinction under the word elevation drawing.
The change here is 17.5 inches. You know, I think, I mean, we have a picture, you know, with the drawing on there too, that shows the back of the house, yes. I mean, you know exactly where that deck is going to be, right there, that Dan has in front of him.
So unfortunately, or fortunately, I'm not sure what the answer is, but in reality, it is the authorized official who makes the determination as to completeness.
Please, Steve? So as long as he deems the application complete, we have to take it as?
That would be my thought, yes.
Well, he's checking off things inappropriately, and I will take issue with the, with the village board and the mayor about this. This is consistent, he's gonna put the village in a very precarious legal position, this is a terrible precedent to set, and I, I think if the board went to Steve and said, we don't think it's visible, I think Steve would jump on that.
Which would also.
We have their application in front of us, though, as I said.
Which would.
Right, to have this before the entire board.
And if Steve, if Steve deems this not visible, then the customer can do whatever they want back there, pretty much.
That's right.
Well, seems like we should've had some discussion about that sooner, I think we should take a vote, Chris.
So I have a motion that was made by Dan, seconded by member Dubrowski.
Well, you made a motion, huh?
Well, I mean.
We now need a vote.
Approve the application is presented, is how we would word that.
Okay.
Specifically with, as you, as he said earlier, with the wood spindles. Specifically with, as you, as he said earlier, with the wood spindles, because it does indicate both.
Yeah, the word totally okay with that, my customer's totally okay with that.
With the wooden spindles?
Yes.
All right, member Searle?
No.
Member Olson?
Yes.
Member DeBrowski?
Aye.
Chair Pollak?
Yes.
Motion passes by name of the pass.
The deck is in compliance with the village design guidelines and the Secretary of Interior Standards. It presents no negative impact to the structure, and is not fixed to it.
It's removable?
It's removable.
And the building inspector has deemed this application complete. Sorry, code enforcement officer.
Yeah. Okay, we have an answer to this, if you can.
Thank you very much.
Okay, thank you.
Make a motion to close the meeting.
Second.
All right, member Searle?
Yes, I'm on.
Member Olson?
Yes.
Member DeBrowski?
Aye.
Chair Pollak?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Thank you.
It's loaded in it.
Thank you. Thank you for being here.
Absolutely.